Good evening, welcome to the October 19th Board of Selectmen's meeting. The meeting is being audio and video recorded. If you'd please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegro flag. Okay, the first item on the agenda is for the Town Planner and Coordinator of Inspection Services. This is Tracy. Oh, there you are. Welcome back, Tracy.
Thank you.
David, did you just want to go over quickly the process?
I will.
Oh, or Linda. I didn't see you in there either.
Yep.
Linda's drawing here.
Yep, no, I will. I, Linda can speak in a moment if she'd like to. I just wanted to say that we went through a full hiring process. We posted for the position after the board approved the job description. As you know, town meeting approved the funding. And I'm very excited to be able to offer Tracy the job. Tracy, as you know, used to work for us as the Assistant Town Administrator. She currently works in the Planning Department in another town. And prior to her working for us, her employment here, she also worked in a law firm that specialized in doing zoning work. So she's extremely qualified. She's an attorney by trade, and I can tell you she's an excellent employee. So I am very excited to recommend her. And Linda, if there's anything else you want to add?
I would just, the same thing. I think she would be an asset to the town of West Bridgewater.
Thank you both. Did anyone have any questions or comments for Tracy?
No, I don't know if we've actually officially met before, but it's nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Other than I wish you never left, and I'm very happy to have you back.
The feeling's mutual.
Okay, so is there a motion to ratify the employment contract for Tracy Aldrich?
Uh, to ratify the employment and the employment contract, please.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second? On our favor?
Aye.
And up next is the ratification of employment and for the employment contract for Christine Eaton, who has had the opportunity to serve as the interim Executive Assistant for a few months now to appoint her as permanent.
Yep, and again, I just wanted to say this as well. Christine has done a really nice job. We always expected her to be interim, but as you know, the full-time person left. And so she's done a really nice job. However, even though we watched her and we knew she could do the job, she was still subject to the same hiring process that everybody else was. So we still posted the job after receiving approval from you for the job description and the posting. She, we had other people that we interviewed, and she was selected as the best candidate. And again, I'm very excited to be able to recommend her as well to the board.
Happy and excited to see that Christine's staying on the team.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we ratify the employment and execute the employment contract for the Executive Assistant Christine Eaton.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the Assistant Library Director Rebecca Fleet. Melanie, did you want to introduce?
Sure. This is Rebecca Fleet. She was the best candidate for the position that we posted last month. She's a young adult librarian at Taunton, and I worked with her for a few years. And I think she'll be a great asset to the community. I'm very excited to have her.
Great, thank you. Linda, did you have anything to add on the?
I don't. I was sort of down the committee with Melanie and Deb Lane Castor as well. And again, she was the best candidate, and I think she's done an excellent job as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, that's great. This time around we follow three time pauses.
I'm happy to see everybody working together.
I want that, and that.
Thank you.
The new, the new time pauses.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you all for working together. I know that was.
Linda was a real asset to the hiring committee. We were glad to have her with us.
She does a nice job. She really does.
Well, welcome. And I make a motion that we ratify the employment and execute the employment contract for the Assistant Library Director Rebecca Fleet.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's official, Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, if you'd like to introduce the next three.
Which one?
We'll start with Kyle McNeil.
Kyle McNeil. Want to sit up front, Kyle? As you know, we have a full-time position opening with Matt Montero leaning onto East Bridgewater. The good thing about this transfer, he's an excellent candidate. We put, he's been eight or nine years with Sharon Police Department. He went through extensive background check here, regardless of his background being at Sharon. Came through flying colors. And the best part of this is that he was basically recruited by our guys. So it's nice to see that our guys are trying to pick quality people. Kyle was, like I said, has been through complete background. I had long talk with him, interviewed with him about a week ago. He's an excellent kid, and a good fit.
Thank you, Chief. Questions?
No, those are excellent remarks. I mean, I couldn't speak higher. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
So how long were you in Sharon for again, Kyle?
Um, I got hired full-time as a dispatcher in fourteen, two thousand and fourteen. Made a patrolman in two thousand and fifteen. And I grew up in Sharon. But in two thousand and fifteen, I moved here with my wife. We started our family, and you know, they're getting into the town sports. And she's into the, you know, on the youth association for the, for the athletes. She's on the board, so kind of made this heart home. And, you know, we like it here, so we want to stay, so.
It's a great town.
It is. We have a good community.
And when your own team's poaching you from somewhere else, that's also a good indicator that you'll work well with the team.
I honestly don't even know how it happened. Just word of mouth, and then I was here, so.
Good.
I'm happy.
Okay, so is there a motion to appoint Kyle McNeil as full-time police officer?
And I would just ask to make it subject to a medical exam. We'll be going next week for it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor? Aye. Congratulations, Kylie.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Going to do the introduce to the permanent intermittent?
Yes.
Who would it be? Steven or Brian? Steven, please. Steven. I'll give you a little background, so you can sit up for Steven. Steven's been with us for a few years as a dispatcher. Worked out really, really well. Tested and was on the high end of the mass civil service list. What we're doing here is we're creating a local list. They went through extensive backgrounds of Steven and Brian. And two quality people, and basically, we're creating this list for the next full-time people. So, and we get time to look at, we know Steven for the last two years. We're going to do a stand-up, Brian. See how they fit with our group, see how they develop. And then we'll go on from there. Hopefully, they'll be the next ones sitting in front of you for a full-time position.
Questions?
No, what, what made you interested in this?
Well, I went to Bridgewater State University and got a degree in criminal justice. My grandfather was the chief in Brockton, so I grew up around him being in the law enforcement field. Always been interested in doing it.
That's great. Do you live locally or?
I live in West Bridgewater now.
Okay.
When I was at Bridgewater State, I lived off campus for a year, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. After that, I met my girlfriend in that period of time. She lives in West Bridgewater. Once I moved out of my apartment, moved in with her. And I've been here since then, twenty nineteen.
You'll never want to leave.
I can see why.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint permanent intermittent. I don't want to butcher your name. Steve D'Amelio? Did I do that close?
Yep. Stefan, but that works.
Sorry. Sorry.
It's okay.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And the second interview, Brian. Again, Brian's a lifelong resident of West Bridgewater, he worked here. Interviewed really well. Presenting going for his degree in criminal justice. His father is a police officer. Did very well in the background. And like I said, now we get time to look at Brian and see if he's a fit with our department coming forward. Hopefully, like I said, these would be very quick, full-time appointments. We have people leaving, so we think we got to rush, but we have a little time to make sure they're a perfect fit.
Um, what can I, um, do I want to start again?
Um, what made you interested in, in this force particularly?
So like the chief said, my father was a police officer, my grandfather was a police officer, so I have family background of law enforcement. I grew up in this town. I lived here my whole life, and there's no other place I'd rather be.
I second that.
Good answer. And you're pursuing your degree in criminal?
Yes, right now at Westfield State.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'd like to make a motion that Brian Smith Jr. is appointed as a permanent intermittent.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We're a couple minutes ahead for the public hearing. You guys don't have to stick around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vote to appoint Tim Hay to the Biologist Study Committee and Recreational Space Committee. This is to fill John Delano's spots on those two committees.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Vote to appoint Priscilla Pratt to the Council on Aging Board.
Um, so moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
We have a number of resignations. Brenda Capiello, Janet Carlson, and Keith Borges. There are motion to accept those three resignations with a letter of thanks.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Vote to appoint the following department heads as record access officers. Ann Williams, Board of Assessors. Melanie Terrell, Library, and Tim Hay, Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Vote to sign the election warrant. This is, I believe, for the November eighth, is it?
Yes.
Election? Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Um, on our favor?
Aye.
Excuse me for a minute, Anthony.
Yeah.
Ben, is the camera working because the TV's not on?
The monitor's off right now because I have to. We're kind of running double duty right now.
Oh, okay.
So I have to take more noise with the monitor.
Okay. Thank you.
Early voting.
So this is here, it's just a, an FYI to the board and also to the general public. Is that for the general election that will be held on November eighth? We have two weeks of early voting here at the town hall. You can see before you that it will be open the same hours as the town hall during the week with the addition that there will be two Saturdays that people could come in and vote as well. This is the same ballot that you would be able to cast on November eighth. You just get to be able to do it earlier or do it whatever is, is at your leisure. I just also, I take this opportunity to say thank you to Annie. You know, Annie's a full-time elected clerk. And I do personally believe that the state has made this pretty unfair on most of our election divisions throughout the state, but Annie in particular. She gets paid zero. She's an elected person, so she has to be here on Saturdays, all those times before hand and afterwards. She's basically running an election every single day for two weeks, and she'll be here on those weekends. So, you know, we're lucky to have her. There'll be other staff that'll be there as well, Sharon Ladine and some poll workers. They fortunately will get paid. But again, Sharon now works six days a week for those two weeks. So I just want to say thank you to them. They do a really good job.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move back to the public hearing. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six forty-five PM on the joint petition of the Massachusetts Electric Company Doing Business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one new pole on North Elm Street, West Bridgewater. The hearing will be held in Town Hall, Eldon Marara Boarding, Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, second floor, six fifty-five North Main Street, West Bridgewater. And this was published October seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All of us, favor?
Aye.
Is there someone from?
Yes.
Good. If you just, um, you can stand or sit there. Totally up to you.
Yes, we're proposing to install a new SPN pole between pole seventeen and sixteen on North Elm Street to feed, um, new, uh, to feed, uh, building five-ten about Elm Street. Who's on Virginia Avenue, it looks like.
Okay. It is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak for or against? Nope. Um, is there motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Um, is there any question or comment on this or a motion?
I make a motion we approve.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, thank you.
Approval of the meeting minutes of September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second?
On our favor?
Aye.
And except for review of the meeting minutes of September twenty-first, twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second?
David, do you want to go over the hazard mitigation plan?
Yep, so real quickly, and Chris is here as DPW Director. I asked him to be here in case you had an additional question. Bottom line is, is that we are required under FEMA's regulations to make sure we have a hazard mitigation plan on record with them. We had one in two thousand and sixteen, in the, new one in two thousand and twenty-one. We had, we received a grant from the state. We hired Ty and Bond. They did all the work. It's about four hundred pages thick. Basically, it says as to what the town will do and will be responsible for if there are any climate resiliency issues or climate-related issues that occur. We approved it earlier in the year. We have sent it off to FEMA or Chris sent it off to FEMA. Chris has received the approval back from FEMA, and at this point, they are just looking for the Board of Selectmen to certify the resolution of adoption. Chris, did I get all that right or did I miss anything? Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to certify adoption of the town's hazard mitigation plan.
So, uh, second?
On our favor?
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is discussion reimbursement, reimbursement to town administrator for vandalism to his personal vehicle while on town business. This was really brought about by a recent news story. I mean, December of two thousand and twenty-one, the town administrator had requested the board reimburse for damage done to his vehicle. In front of us is an email that he had sent for the request. I will briefly summarize it. On October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the town administrator purchased a two thousand and nineteen Audi A-six. There were no scratches or other defects on the vehicle. On, seven days later, on October twenty-first, while attending a meeting with the DPW Director, Chris Antilli, and the consulting town engineer, Jim Noyce. He had parked the vehicle at Dempsey Property. They had walked the Lincoln Street property for, I believe, a couple hours. I'm not sure if the developer was present or not, but it was in regards to the change of street location and the develop, potential development on Lincoln Street. At some point during, while the car was parked in the Dempsey property, it's apparent that it was keyed or vandalized. The town administrator requested that he be reimbursed for the damage because it was done while on town, town time. Reasonably assumed that it was because of his role as town administrator. None of the other vehicles there were damaged. We have two reliable witnesses that can attest to the damage not being present when the vehicle arrived. I know that it was looked into a little bit. David consulted with the police chief to see if there was any security footage in the area, which there was not. The, typically, the town administrator has the ability to sign off on invoices on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. This one, because it financially impacts him directly, was placed on our desk for signature. Two of the three board members signed the invoice approving the request, and it was paid for. Any other comments?
So I think my, my comment is that, you know, this was an unfortunate set of events, and it bothered me seeing it on the television and hearing about it without all of the facts being in place. And we routinely sign bills. That's part of what we do, and I assume the majority of the public trusts us in signing those bills. And just because one selectman doesn't vote in favor doesn't mean the, the event shouldn't be, that our judgment shouldn't be trusted. It was just a disagreement. All of the facts were not published, which again is another unfortunate set of circumstances. I mean, just looking at the economics of it, he has a thousand dollar deductible. Even if the town had, or the Board of Selectmen had said, well, we'll meet you halfway, we'll pay your deductible, we're going to sit here and squabble over two hundred dollars? Let's, let's move on with life. The fact that, it, it's irrelevant, in my opinion, that two out of three of us voted on it. It bothered me more to see it on television and hear some of the comments being made. So I'm glad it was put on the agenda. It's unfortunate that those out in the public that had some very negative comments didn't take the opportunity to come here and express their opinion on policy. It's an open door. It's always been an open door. With that, I'm not sure if we need a policy for anomalies. Anomalies need to be handled fact-based, and, and the probability of a situation like this occurring again, I think, is slim to none with the same fact pattern of people being there and being able to say it wasn't there before. So I, I'm not convinced we need a policy per se. I think it's more a fact of when situations like this occur, we continue to use our best judgment to make decisions. And again, the fact that two of us vote in favor and one doesn't isn't a reflection of pretty much anything, in my opinion. Just that there's a difference of opinion. Doesn't change the facts of what we voted on.
That's accurate. I'm, I am the selectman that voted against it. I'm not saying any of that was incorrect. I voted no based on the policy. I felt that it would not, I would not have changed my vote depending on who the employee was. So I felt it as a policy and as a way of setting example. I didn't see in favor of it. It's not me fighting or trying to put anyone down or say that anything is not clear here or is anything is not as it seems. I do want to correct, correct one item you said. You said I was given the opportunity to sign, and I wasn't.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
Good. All right. The next item is public comment period. Anyone from the public have anything? Oh, all right. Is that a?
Actually, what, I think that there needs to be some sort of a clear policy for if this happens going forward. Because we currently have about, I think the count was about seven town employees that need access to a vehicle during the day for town business, and we have one, maybe two. So there are town employees using their personal vehicles. That's happening. That's going to happen. What if they get into an accident? It may be an anomaly. People get into accidents every day, though. So seven people, the odds of them getting into an accident, one of them while on town time doing town business in their personal vehicles, that, that could happen again. What's the policy going to be? Are they responsible because they're not given a vehicle for their own damage, but they're on town time? So do we buy seven cars?
Are we certain the car was not available for use?
I don't know that, but we're going to assume that we trust our employees, right? Because we hire them, we pay them, we give them responsibilities, we trust them. So employee says he needed to use his vehicle, we trust that. Employee says scratch wasn't there before, we trust that. Employee should get paid for that work because they shouldn't be responsible for it because they have no other alternative. They have to work. They have to drive to get to the work or the job. What's the alternative then?
Is there coverage in our auto insurance for the town?
For personal vehicles? Because that would be what you would have to look into then, because then it would have been covered because he was on town time. So somebody would have paid somewhere at any point, but it wouldn't have been David, it would have been the town. So the same thing would have happened. So what should be the policy going forward? It's inevitable. Like this may happen again. Like this could happen again. This isn't that crazy to think of. What's going to be the policy? Are we going to still have like warring selectmen about whether or not we believe the story or it happened on town time, or maybe he had access, maybe he didn't? Are we going to question our employees like that every single time, or are we going to have a policy? Or are we going to give them each a vehicle?
So my opinion, it would be financially, it wouldn't be, just doesn't make sense to go out and buy six vehicles and how, and, and the taxpayers paying for that in insurance, and they sit in the parking lot. I mean, you could have a day where they could all be out because there's inspectional services, David has to be somewhere, we have voting, plus we have volunteers. You, you have the, the staff that goes down and handles the voting. So we, we cannot buy a whole bunch of vehicles to suit these purposes. We're West Bridgewater. We're, we're not Boston, number one. Number two, this was, I think this situation, again, I'm looking at the fact pattern here. And if this was a, just a, somebody ran into someone, you know, backing up their car, hit, it was a tap, that's a probable type of situation. And in that event, I would have leaned towards no use your insurance because it's probable when you park in a parking lot that your car is going to be hit. We all take that risk. It's not probable that you park in a parking lot at a business that's barely open and your car is keyed up the side. And two people were present before it was keyed and can state that wasn't there, and then it was. So it, I think each situation has to be evaluated. Now, that doesn't mean we don't need to come up with some guidelines, maybe. And I would, I would like to ask David and Linda maybe to look at this. You know, how many people are out at a given time? Maybe you can talk to some of the other department heads and come up with some guidelines and have an understanding with the employees. It's not uncommon for a private company to have employees out at any given time going to webinars or customer visits and using their personal cars. So that's not uncommon. They don't have cars sitting out there for everyone to use. But one of the things I think we've always tried to stress is that we want West Bridgewater to be a good employer. So we don't want our employees being hung out to dry when something completely unexpected that no one would have thought of occurs to any of their property. So maybe that's something we can look at, and they can come to us with some ideas. But again, this was, no one would expect that. And if the fact pattern was different and Chris and Jim weren't able to say, I was there, I looked at the car, I didn't see that there. And it's not uncommon when someone gets a new car, stand outside and, I'm not saying you're a show-off, David, but to show off their new car, it's a nice car. So you do, you would notice a key, uh, that the car was keyed down the side. That would be probably the first thing they say. So that's what I'm thinking, towards a set of guidelines, maybe. And, and the, the employees should have full disclosure that if you use your vehicle during town time and it's a probable type of situation, someone backs into you, then that would be something we'd expect you to go through your insurance on. But I don't know how many, how many accidents or situations have we had with personal vehicles?
We have not, but they do use them a lot. We have multiple inspectors in town that all use their personal vehicles. We have part-time inspectors that use their vehicles. Our treasure goes to the bank on average almost every day, you know, sometimes only three to four times a year. Um, in, uh, sometimes only three to four times a week, but on average, almost every day. So, he's out. As you said, when we have elections, the town clerk is using her personal vehicle. It would be impossible for us to have a fleet of six, seven, eight cars for everybody. But I also think that it would be unfair that if Scott Golda goes to the bank and he comes out and his car gets keyed, we're going to say so sad, sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got to balance that with, uh, to, can anyone attest to the fact that there was no scratch to begin with? Um, because we just can't go with, if my car get keyed.
It doesn't just affect town hall employees. I mean, the police chief has police officers who use their personal vehicle to go to court, for example.
Yeah.
So, when they get called to testify, unfortunately, many times, and correct me if I'm wrong, they're supposed to be there if they, um, was it rushed to get to court and wait? Um, but you get, yeah, you, you, uh, you get there at nine o'clock. You think you're going to testify at eleven, four o'clock. They say come back tomorrow. Um, so, we can't just have extra police cars. Um, you know, there, there has to be, in my opinion, there just has to be a reasonable give and take on this. Um, and so, I don't know. I mean, I'll, I'm, I, I wrote it down. I believe you want us to try to come up with some guidelines, but I do think it's going to be a little bit difficult because this was an anomaly that hopefully will never occur again. But I really want to be fair to our employees that if they're using their vehicle and although they can by law put in for mileage, I can tell you most of them don't. And I think it's just because they really like their employment here. They feel good. It's a good employer. As you said to the earl, offices earlier, this is a good, uh, good town. And we also have to be good employee, uh, good employers. And if they're not even going to put in for miles and they have damage to their car and then we're going to say sorry? I'm not exactly sure if that's a good employer at that point.
So, ma- maybe, you know what, the best approach, in my opinion, is talk to the employees that frequently use their own vehicles. And, and, you know, and, and let them know that it's not just going to be a matter of if something happens to their vehicle, it's automatically paid for. It's going to be, you know, uh, we're going to have to consider what happened. I really think this is a s- trivial matter in the grand scheme of things. But, um, again, the focus is on being a good employer. And if they express a significant amount of concern, then we have something to address.
Could I ask about auto allowances and stipends? How is that handled? And is there a policy that goes with them? Is there a way to marry the two together?
Jump out of policy.
Yeah.
I mean, what?
And again, the, the vehicle use, I don't think rises, except for maybe David. I'm not sure the vehicle use rises to the level of stipend and, and David, I think you do a great job, but I'm not it. I, for one, am not interested in adding a stipend for a vehicle for him.
No.
They should be putting it out. Like, the health agent, I would guess, is probably the one who uses this the most, maybe, for inspections?
He uses his quite a bit, but so does, but the assessors, the conservation agent.
Assessors.
Assessors too.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they're, they're out there every, I mean, we're a wet town. Conservation agent is doing daily inspections. Um, granted, where there was COVID, but now, before COVID and now as we get back to normal, normal times, you're going to have police officers in court. Um, you know, our, they're out there. They're out there every day. I mean, the, the, um, if we have seventy-five building permits, all seventy-five building permits, we always focus just on the building inspector who goes out there. But as part of that, the electrical inspector might have to go out, the gas inspector might have to go out. And in every one of those cases, the board of assessors should be going out as well. Those are three cars. All three people using their personal cars.
And of the town's cover of inspections, right? East Bridgewater. I mean, an agreement with, East Bridgewater.
Well, that's a very good point. So, we have, um, intermunicipal agreement. So, all of our inspectors do so. For example, Rob, our health agent, will be in East Bridgewater at times and if he's on vacation, they come here. Um, but that is correct. They, they will use their personal car to go outside jurisdiction, but still doing town-related business because as a town, we signed that intermunicipal agreement. They're not doing it on their own. In fact, this board signed it.
So, East Bridgewater's inspectors may not want to come here if they know that they're going to come here and maybe give somebody an unfavorable inspection and have damage done to their car and not be reimbursed for it or even heard on it. And I'm wary of a overcorrection on this matter based off a poorly written news story.
Right.
I don't think how much the employee makes should have been brought up. It doesn't matter in, in the news story, not by anyone here.
Absolutely correct.
No one should come to work and expect to lose money.
Sorry.
The other thing that's unfortunate is this thing happened over a year ago. It was settled. It was signed. It was put to bed. And here we are a year later still dragging it through the mud. The unfortunate thing is David, myself, or any other department head is working day and night for this town. And this is unfortunate and it is wrong. And then, of course, when you have a news story, it's done as a one-sided, uh, story that's just unfortunate. Unfortunately, we're targets. We become people that are easily, easy prey. There are those that don't like us or that just want to drag things through the mud, and that's unfortunate. But it's hard to put in a good day's work every day when you have this distraction going on. And it's got to stop.
Well, I think it's, uh, a lot of it results because you said no to someone.
Yeah.
And, and that's when I hear the complaints. It's, well, he said no, but, but you're doing your job. And, but at the same time, knowing all of you that are in the room that are in a position to take phone calls from the residents, I know you do and I know you do your very best to try to help them and go out of your way. Uh, but it's never going to change that all you need to do is say no once and it's going to be ten people who suddenly don't like you and it's irrelevant. If you do your, you're doing your job, you make a decision. They don't like the answer. That's unfortunate. But you're, you're here to do your job for the masses, not just one individual person.
I don't want to commission any future to the client.
Sorry, we can't help you. Um, so, I, I, it's a tough one. I, if anyone, uh...
I mean, I can reach out to other towns to see what they do.
Yeah, maybe talk to them, but, you know, we're so small. I would, I would say, again, I would try to talk to some of the employees that do the majority of using their personal vehicle and, and see what their thoughts on, are on the matter. Um, I would te- I would tend to think, and, and maybe I'm incorrect, that most people know, they presume, you know, if they get in a car accident or they're in a supermarket and there's a door ding, those are common occurrences. It's on them. But when there's, again, every situation's different. It's not a cookie cutter approach. When you have something that has a fact pattern that is an anomaly, then I think it's something that has to come to us. So, I don't know if a policy per se, hard and fast, is the way to go, but something, there has to be something.
I agree with that, a policy and maybe looking into the insurances. I just know it's, uh, in a private business, in our situation, we have an employee handbook that has the policy in it. And then our insurance has to back that up. Um, so that if someone is out in their personal vehicle, my understanding is, um, they're covered through the company because they're out on company time. I don't know how that works with a municipality. You guys would know.
It's probably the same.
That way much more than I would. I just know that's how we're doing it in my own office.
Yeah, but...
Can I say one thing? I wasn't going to say anything, but I will. This was a targeted malicious damage. This was a felony. This is not a kid going by. Targeted a employee of ours. If they had targeted me or employer mine, we wouldn't be sitting here because I already would have done what you did. And most of the time, the warrants is big, we don't see. Because they're targeting our employees if they did. This is malicious damage. This is, this is a crime. And if we, we need to back up people, I'm going to back all my people because it's the right thing to do. And I don't even understand why we have this conversation.
Just to add one more thing too. I mean, you know, um, you know, when you mentioned it was targeted, my vehicle, David's and Chris's were all next to each other. And, you know, as soon as we saw his car was keyed, you know, David was laughing about it. But five seconds later, I'm running around my Jeep to make sure it wasn't keyed. So, it was, you know, it wasn't just a random thing. They had three vehicles there. And if somebody wanted to key all three, they could have gone ahead and done it, but they just focused on that one.
And to be clear, I wasn't laughing about my car being keyed. I was laughing how fast you moved.
So, I, I, I get, I know, again, I'm not sure what the answer is. I think Linda has a task list of things to look at and, uh, maybe talk to other towns and then at a later time come back to us. I, I'm glad the opportunity to hear from some others on this subject. Well, um, we have that tonight. Hopefully, I doubt the newspaper will pick up this meeting and do an expose to add on to what they've already done. Uh, but I hope some residents maybe will learn of what was explained tonight. And the fact that one of our employees was targeted, not cool.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your feedback. Town administrator's report.
And just on that, I just want to say thank you for your support. Um, all right, under town administrator's report, um, I just wanted to give Marilyn Mather credit. She's put together a luncheon for our first responders. It will be next Thursday. You can see it's from eleven thirty to one. Uh, first responders actually really do an excellent job. As the chief said, it's all of our collective job to, to support them. Um, and Marilyn is doing that by having this luncheon. So, the support is certainly, um, uh, invited as well. I unfortunately am going to be at a labor law seminar, so I will not be there, but I'm just putting, I want to let the board know. Uh, the second thing is, is that a FYI is that we have been meeting for multiple years now. Anthony chairs the recreational space committee, of which I'm also a member. And we have been working on trying to make sure that we can bring additional athletic fields to the town. It would be, um, soccer fields, football fields, uh, re-turf, a baseball field, add eight pickleball courts and a couple of basketball courts as well. And also create some additional trails. And most of this would go on the Russo complex that we bought a handful of years ago in Lincoln Street. Um, we'll have to secure funding to do it. We have, um, we have worked on it for a handful of years. Um, and so, we will be before this board on November second. Uh, at that time, we will be, the recreational space committee will make their presentation. We will ask the board to call a special town meeting right now targeting December fifth. And in the meantime, on November fourteenth, we will have a public hearing where the recreational space committee will invite all the public in at the auditorium, at the middle school, high school. Uh, in that way, they can ask questions, go through the entire project, but not have the pressure to take a vote. And that is being modeled as to what we did with the golf course. You remember, we had a large public hearing. Everybody could spend a couple of hours to look at the play and ask questions, get their information, but then reserve having to vote on it for a handful of weeks and let it all digest. Um, so, just an FYI, they will be bringing that to here. Uh, Anthony is chair. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Nope. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, and the last item is that, um, the inspectional services consolidation plan, we are still working on it. I am frustrated because it seems that every single time I take two steps forward, I have to take two steps back. But that's what happens in construction. Um, so, with that said, um, uh, I've, was requested from the building commissioner to get a stamped engineering decision that we were able to remove some of the walls. So, that tied us up for, for three to four weeks, but that did just come in this past week. Armed with that, I now have to go and get a contractor. I had one, but because of the delay in time, I lost him to another job, so I have to get another contractor or wait. So, I'm going through that process, but I want to let you know we're on it. We're committed to it. I think it'll be a really good thing for the town and for the employees. Um, and we're still working on it.
Do we have a place to put Tracy?
At the Vic, at the police department.
Already...
We would love to have Tracy there. We, we built the police department for fifty years. So, we didn't build it to fit when we moved in. So, I have a lovely space if she needs it.
Now, you're poaching our staff.
Always willing to take one for the team, honey. Damn, you're good.
Hey, you probably, I didn't even think about it, but this is that problem. It's a very professional room.
Take him on for the team.
Team player.
Nope. I would never put Tracy in.
All right. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.